Start with my allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the open session minutes from February 10th, 2020.
Motion to approve the open session minutes from February 10th, 2020.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the executive session minutes of February 10th, 2020.
Approval of the executive session minutes for February 10th, 2020. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I hear no dissents, so we'll move on. Student comments?
Apparently Owen is not here.
Owen's not here tonight. Okay, so we'll postpone those for, table those for next week or next meeting?
Yep.
Community comments, anybody from community, community got any comments for us this evening? Nothing seen, so we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
All right, well, good evening. First, just as a promotional item, I can't believe that this is already the eighth year that this has occurred. But we are looking at a week from Friday, the Eighth Annual MU RSD Music Booster Trivia Night, and I know a lot of you have participated in the past, being that you are all incredibly bright and know your trivia. But that, once again, will be Friday night, March 6th, 7:00 PM at the End Zone Sports Club. I know every year they get some walk-ins that come together as a team, but as I said in the background notes, it's a remarkably fun night, and it's also really lucrative for the music boosters, so everybody really enjoys it, so if you know anybody, please bring them that evening. Second, I just want to point out, and I believe all of you on the committee did get an invite to this, John and Mary Ann at the high school do monthly lead learner workshops, and by the very nature of it, it's open to any staff member, any student, or any parent, but they really want parent insight for the one that is coming up this Thursday after school in the NIPMUC PDC, and it's going to be dedicated to new models of defining success. So I know we have in our strategic plan, but we also specifically for this year at NIPMUC have really some structured activities for all stakeholders to brainstorm on getting away from the traditional measures of grades, SAT scores, AP, and so on. Not that they're unimportant, but they only really take, tell a small snapshot of the story. So they're looking for parent volunteers particularly to come and join in a community-wide discussion of different new models, and then what specifically is actionable. So again, that is this coming Thursday at 2:10, right after the date concludes at NIPMUC. And then last but not least, you do have in your packet the year-to-date expenditure report for the FY 2020 budget. Jay, are there any items that you'd like to highlight?
Not particularly tonight, we've got a couple of maintenance issues that continue to revolve around the boiler at NIPMUC again. We got another crack in it that had to get welded, so I believe it's working again. Boiler Memorial had some issues with the electronic controls, we fixed that. But other than that, it's been a relatively quiet month or so. So I'm pretty comfortable with things.
Snow and ice are good.
I don't know, I heard that we got a little bit today, but it got a little bit visible.
No, I think we're gonna sit down today.
I'm gonna let Joe say that, so that when he has to get up at 4:00 in the morning and deal with it.
Well, if you'll allow me this one change of protocol, can we go to student comments, since Owen's here?
I am very sorry, it was a very busy night in Delhi. All right, so.
You didn't bring anything like, you know, sandwiches or?
Wish I could've, all right. So, once again, extremely thankful for the opportunity, and I'm excited to give you guys some insight, all right? First of all, I hope everyone had a great week last week. Over break, actually, me and my family went to Utah, which is a really fun experience.
I saw Mom's pictures on Facebook, it looks like a great town.
Oh my gosh, it's beautiful up there. Lot more snow.
Park City?
Lot more snow. What, oh, Park City, yeah.
Which one?
Just really great experience, we went skiing, which is completely different. Anyone who had skied knows it, and if you're skiing in New England, you're lucky if you're not going over rocks. This is like three feet of snow.
Pure powder.
Oh, oh yeah, it is beautiful up there. And second of all, I want to start by saying congratulations again to our boys and girls indoor track and field teams, the Dual Valley Conference Champions for 2020. The banners have arrived, and will be hung in the gymnasium with pride. All right, so we have had, well, the Wednesday before break, during our advisory, NIPMUC hosted a school-wide brainstorming session to come up with ideas for the next Inspired Learning Day. The Advisory Brainstorming Challenge, AVC, was established to hear from the students directly on what they will be looking to get out of the Inspired Learning Day. The advisory groups were given at different competencies of the portrait of a learner: Effective Communicator, Global Citizen, Inspired Innovator, Mindful Learner, Skillful Collaborator, and Solution Seeker, and were able to build different ideas off of these competencies. The ideas were then posted in the lobby for all to see for the remainder of the week. My idea for the Inspired Learning Day was kind of built off of an activity that we did at the beginning of my APUSH class this year, in which we were tasked with the creation of a government solely based off of, well, the teacher was inside of the room and, you know, just kind of advised us on, well, here and there. It was mainly up to the students to construct this, and we had to draft our own version of a constitution, decide which form of government we wanted to use, so like a democracy or monarchy otherwise. And so my idea would to be to try to craft a government while meanwhile, students would be presented with different challenges that they would have to overcome through a legislative process. All right, it was impactful to see hundreds of ideas all in one place. NIPMUC is surely ready to take off and launch the next Inspired Learning Day that is scheduled for April 15th. Next up, NIPMUC has over 120 students participating this Thursday in a DECA state competition in Boston, which I know that a lot of people are really excited for, and good luck to them. So, NIPMUC and CBS have teamed up to host several presentations addressing the dangers of prescription drug misuse and abuse. The first presentation called "One Choice Can Change Everything" will take place this Wednesday, February 26th, during advisory for both 9th and 10th grade students. That same evening, there will be a presentation geared for parents called "Prescription For Parents," and will take place at 6:30 PM in the NIPMUC PDC. The following week, on March 4th, during the next advisory, both the 11th and 12th grade students will attend the "One Choice Can Change Everything" presentation. And topping off my report is Mr. NIPMUC. This Saturday, February 29th, the class of 2020 will be hosting the annual Mr. NIPMUC competition at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Doors are going to open at 6:30, and tickets are going to be $7 at the door, and quite frankly, I am very excited for this.
Are you competing? I need to.
Not this year, no, I'm not.
Okay.
Well, that concludes the report, once again, so grateful for the opportunity, I will force her every week.
Thank you, Owen.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
On to subcommittee updates. So the budget subcommittee is first, everyone.
Okay. I believe what we have for the update is what I discussed during our meeting two weeks ago, kind of another look at the budgetary situation, but this time kind of looking at it through a longer lens, and specifically looking at a five-year projection. I know invariably this comes up very frequently, if not every single fiscal year, where somebody says, hey, have you looked out five years? And I know when we were coming out of the recession, 2011, 2012, and I think Lee and you, Phil, were on the committee, some initial work was done quite a while ago by Jay and also Don Moran at the time, and also Rick Schofield, and kind of trying to look at what would the future hold for the district. I think that projection was fairly rough, not that what I'm about to present tonight is super, super detailed, but I think it has a little bit higher degree of sophistication to it than what we have. So I'm going to try to not make this death by PowerPoint. Please feel free to interrupt me if at any point there is a slide that you don't understand. I'm going to try to keep this as high level as possible to underscore what we believe based upon the modeling that we've created here. So I really think there's a couple essential questions based upon taking a look at this five-year data. And one is, how can we ensure that there's sustained support, that we're not just living through another year, but really having that sustained and ongoing support for continuous district improvement as envisioned in our strategic plan? All of you remember that a little more than a year ago, we had approximately 45 parents, community members, educators, administrators, students come together and put together a blueprint that I think is very, very solid for continuous growth as a district. How can we assure that that's going to be sustained, at least through the period of the strategic plan? And the second essential question is, how do we ensure, again, for that sustainability piece, and that we're not just living to next fiscal year? I think unfortunately, in financing many, many school districts, and also on the municipality side, it's almost this sense of, boy, how can we get through next year? And sometimes you have to step back and take a look at a larger look. I think there's other questions as well, kind of getting a little bit more specific, and we're going to get in the weeds in a little bit, but can we make some good judgments? And what do the five-year historical revenue and expenditure data for the district tell us? What do we realistically project our expenditures to be through the next five years? And hopefully our projections show that. And then more importantly, again, with that first essential question, what realistically type of revenue will we need over the next five years to maintain level services? But then also for those real critical needs, if you recall, there was approximately 22 FTEs that were put forward that are not included in the FY 21 budget requests. So what does that realistically look at? So here's kind of the weedsy part, and I've kind of reduced it down to hopefully one slide, and hopefully simplicity in what was used to kind of come up with these five-year projections. So I put in front of you three spreadsheets. One is our revenue, that has five years' worth of data, and then five years projected. And then two expenditure spreadsheets, one with just projecting forward level services, and one with the added needs. But keep in mind, on the left side of each spreadsheet is the actual historical data, okay, going back to the FY 17 year. And it's broken down into 12 categories, which are known as the Universal Chart of Accounts, or UCOA. These are the state categories that the Department of Education and the Department of Finance classify all expenditures. And when we do our state reporting, these are the lines that we use. And you can see, there are general categories, administration, regular education instruction, special education instruction, people services, regular transportation, special ed transportation, and so on, okay? They're universal, apples to apples for all school districts across the Commonwealth. What I've done, and you'll see this in the slides, is we delineated all revenue sources, including federal entitlement grants, you know, things like the IDEA or Special Education Grant, the other grants that Maureen manages, writes and manages, such as Title I and Title II, for things like literacy and professional development, and the school choice monies as well. Now realize, school choice and our entitlement grants, by their very definition, are held outside of the operational budget. But I thought, and you'll see a slide coming up, I thought it was important to show all revenue sources. So what Jay did in putting this together was using the five-year averages, so FY 17 through 21, for each of the chart of accounts categories, and using that five-year average to project forward each and every single year. Again, not a very exact science, but you're still basing it based upon five years of highs and lows.
So Jay, in that spreadsheet, you've got the trend over the last five years as the first average, right? The first percentage?
Right.
The trend over the five years, and then the second percentage is a one-year trend for use for projection, is that correct?
The five-year trend is the change from 17 to 21, correct?
And then the five-year average is just a per year?
Is taking that five-year trend and dividing it by five.
By five, yeah. So I mean, ideally, that would be a one-year, the one-year percentage and the five-year
Right, so we use that, that five-year average to annually.
Understood, I get it, okay.
Not a perfect science, but I'm not sure that without like getting into the nitty-gritty, it's pretty hard to actually connect the exact words.
No, you could be doing a regression analysis if you really.
Yeah, no, I'd forget about it.
Yeah. All the time in the world.
Yeah, and wanted to predict something wildly useless.
And then, you know, I'll get into the second part of this, but what you see on the spreadsheet that has the expenditure projections with added needs are the needs that are detailed in our strategic plan, and also have been detailed by our district leadership team. So just as kind of the second piece, there are some assumptions that are in these projections. One, which is very, very important, is we are using as that fifth and final year, the FY 21 operational budget, and the assumption is that that budget request has been met, and that all of our positions and programming that we currently have are intact. Now keep in mind, that's a, you know, I've got that as number one, because quite frankly, that's a very big assumption. Secondly, over the next five years, there will be an increase of approximately 130 students across the district. We've talked in the last two meetings about the NESDEC enrollment projections, so that's part of the calculus. You know, I think this is a really, really safe assumption, that we will be, continue to be below target share, and through DESI, we will continue to be a hold harmless district receiving the minimum aid of $30 per student, so that's an assumption in the revenue side. So also, I want to point out, in our revenue projections, we have typical contributions as would be in a non-override year. So something like approximately 50% of new, of the two and a half levy increase, and 50% of new growth would be the typical contributions from both of our communities. Also, you can see very clearly on the revenue spreadsheet that the capital project debt for our two elementary schools will be fully paid off, starting in FY 25, so that's a piece that's in there. And there is no E and D or excess and deficiency contribution by the MU RSD for FY 21 and beyond. Now that's obviously something that is subject to change, but as we discussed in the FY 21 budget presentation last week, or two weeks ago, right now, there isn't a sufficient amount to be accessed as a district receipt. So first, some commentary on the revenue, and most of this is looking at our historical revenue. Again, my best attempt, and you know, I might refine this a little bit further, at kind of giving a graphic representation of our revenue piece. I usually have this in the budget certification presentation, but I think it's really important to underscore looking at every single revenue source that there is in our current fiscal year's budget, and kind of looking at a really, really simple pie graph, because quite frankly, there's only five sources. And you can see what the state aid is, what the assessment is to each of our communities, the relatively small amount of federal grants that we have, again, IDEA and the Title I and Title II, and then district receipts. Now the district receipts, the largest pieces here would be excess and deficiency, or E and D, choice. Now realize, this year, we're accessing approximately $1 million in choice funds, and then some of our revolving accounts, things like Medicaid reimbursement, and a small amount from our before and after-school programs. So as you can see, 57% of all of our revenue is coming from our two communities. But I want to point out the picture, the blue part of the pie, the 4% coming from district receipts, okay? And specifically, what we've accessed as far as E and D and school choice to make this year's budget work, so to speak. Okay, I think that's really significant. Part of it, and now if you take that and you compare that to what we're proposing for next year, you can see our two communities' percentage, a piece of the pie, going up, okay? And again, that's part of our request, it's also part of the increase in minimum local contribution as defined by the state funding formula. But notice the little blue slice of the district receipts has gone down by $900,000. And again, it's a smaller amount of school choice allocation, but it's also a lack of any E and D allocation as well. So that's a significant piece, I think that's important to point out. So if you're to look at the trend of actual revenue that the district has brought in from all sources in this five-year period, it is an increase of 8.74% in total, looking at our FY 17 through 19 actuals, the current year budget, and what's proposed. So on average, that increase in revenue to the overall operational budget is about 1.75% per year. So this one should not come as a shock to you, if you were to take a look at the same five-year trend of state aid, our chapter 70 aid, it is a whopping 2.13% over the five years, it's less than one-half of 1%, okay? And you can see, it's as flat as flat can be across that five-year span. So now we look to our major source of funding, our two communities. So if you were to take a look at the increase in assessment that each of our two communities have paid, going from FY 17 to our current request, you can see the percentage, and again, that bar on the far right, the light blue one, represents again the presupposition of what we've put in the initial budget request. So even with that very large ask for FY 21, it's about an average increase of 5.36%. And Upton very much mirrors the same exact data, okay? And again, 5.35%, very, very close, because as I usually point out, the percentages of students for each community has been pretty static over that period. So now we look at the other side of the coin, the expenditure side. If you look at the actual expenditures, again, the actuals for FY 17 through 19, and then the current year budget, and then the proposed, it mirrors the revenue side, obviously, an increase of 8.8% over that five-year span, which an average increase of 1.76%. So that's the historical and our projected, or our ask for FY 21. What are the projections of expenditures and revenue beyond next fiscal year? So we're talking FY 22 to FY 26. So presupposition number one is, what would it look like just for level services? Keeping in place what we have now and are requesting for FY 21, and then carrying that out five fiscal years. So if you follow very carefully what Jay has put together in the expenditure spreadsheets, again, for those 12 chart of account categories, and then carry it out to the total, you can see the increases in the budget from year to year. So one, the smallest for FY 25, and we can talk about that, would be a 2.3% increase, which kind of mirrors again the year that the debt comes off the books. And then the largest being FY 26, with a 4.16% increase, according to this model. So I think it's important to now mirror that up with the revenue for typical funding. And the typical funding, again, is defined as, again, half and half of the two and a half levy and half of new growth. Again, rolling that forward would be about a 1.75% increase each of those years. So taking that, and then taking the revenue through that period and comparing it to what is actually needed, this graphically shows what would be the gap. And again, this is just level services. So the total height of the bar represents what's actually needed for level services. The red represents the shortfall, okay? So graphically, but if you're looking at the actual real data of a potential gap, that first year beyond the override would be a gap of approximately $700,000, and then a, out to FY 26, a gap of $3.7 million. So any questions on that?
Oh, tons of questions.
Okay. Ask your questions, I just got to change something really quickly.
In general, if I'm characterizing what you're saying, we're going to set up for, you know, override every year?
I don't know if I necessarily want to commit to that point. I don't know if I necessarily want to commit to that point. I think the larger conversation is looking at this from a longer perspective than one year, and then also ensuring that there are funds that come from the override that are specifically earmarked to the public school district beyond just the override year. I think that's part of the larger conversation.
Yeah, okay.
So again, I think the piece around, I think there's a critical piece around, again, our conversation around unmet critical needs, particularly that are articulated in our strategic plan. You know that because of budgetary constraints, I think we struggle just to meet level services. You know, quite frankly, if you recall last fiscal year in putting together this budget, even with both communities, you know, staying within the 2.5 levy limit and really showing, in my opinion, very, very good effort, we still lost 4.0 FTEs. You know, still in both buildings, we do not have a library media specialist. We still have lost some intervention support at the elementary level. So that's a real concern. We also are, you know, again, in our strategic plan, there's a lot of critical programs and services related to social emotional learning, related to meeting kids' needs who are struggling, whether they have IEPs or not. And also, the really creative dynamic pieces that are envisioned around hands-on, real-world experiences for our kids, again, they're not being implemented due to concerns around funding. And again, all of these district-wide improvements are clearly detailed in our strategic plan.
Do we have an understanding of what, if we, you have to probably project it through the revenue, the five-year projection from before, the Chapter 7 funding was essentially a five-year trend is 2.13%. But that is actually, so divided by five would be the 4.43.
About a half a percent a year.
0.43%.
So.
And you could make the case that that'll actually get smaller because if you're consistently getting 30 bucks per kid.
So our increase in expenditures, classically, we would expect that our increase in expenditures would be compensated partly by the state.
Correct.
And this is absolutely no.
Well, and to be very, very fair, the overwhelming majority of onus falls to our two communities. It's almost close.
So this goes back to the truth you gave us in the last, I believe, this last school committee meeting, where you showed the relationship between the fallout and the Chapter 70.
Correct.
The assessment by the state that our community is getting richer and therefore can pay more of a percentage.
Correct, correct. Because part of this is closely correlated to the whole target share discussion as well. So to kind of go back to a slide that I had two weeks ago that showed the different positions that were not fulfilled, just for the sake of a model, we took those positions and said, what if you were to expand incrementally? And again, all consistent with the vision that's articulated in the strategic plan, and add those over the course of these five years. And again, broken down by elementary, middle school, and high school. And if you notice for district, with the exception of one position, it's kind of, it's undefined, but it's taking into account that increased, projected increase of enrollment of 130 students. So with the added needs, taking those positions into account, again, those added needs, what it would look like would be an increase overall in our operational budget of somewhere in the ballpark of the low end around 3%. Again, FY '25 to the high end of FY '23, about 4.9%. So again, taking the same exact look and saying, okay, based upon what we would have for typical funding, this is what it looks like with regard to how much is needed, where the red represents the gap. And then in real terms, in real dollars, you can see how those numbers grow up. Where in FY '22, it's conceivably a gap of $1 million. And then in FY '26, a gap of roughly $5.5 million, according to this model. Any questions on that?
So where do we show the 130-student increase impact to our funding? From a state perspective?
In the additional positions, one additional teacher was added in, I think, '22.
No, I got, I have, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I understand the expenditure piece, we're going to see it in the revenue component.
There isn't going to be a revenue change.
Why wouldn't there be a revenue change?
Because we're still, because we're still not, you're going to get, you know, you might get 15 more kids, you're still going to be at that $30 a kid. So you'll get 30 times, say, 20, so you'll get around $600. There's no way to really reflect that and make any difference.
We don't get the base if we add 10 kids, we don't get the base.
You get $30 a kid, no, you get $30 a kid for those 10 kids.
Because you're below target share.
Right. Until we have, as long as we're not at target share, we're never really going to get more than the minimum per student. So add 50 kids, you're going to get $30 a kid, that's it. I mean, I talked to somebody at the Department of Ed last week because I was working on this, and I had some questions about some other enrollment things. And his answer to me was, I don't see any change in your not getting more than the minimum in the foreseeable future. He was real cheery. He's one of my best sources, though, I mean, very, you know, helpful guy, but that formula is what it is.
So based upon this look, again, I think I used this exact terminology during our last meeting. I think the district is really at a critical inflection point. It can continue with forward momentum and continue towards the path of excellence or spiral downward with a large number of cuts across the board that would impact class sizes, programs, and so on. I think the bottom line is, and I think this presentation is really only the start, but there has to be a multiple-year commitment to adequately fund the district's operational budget. I can honestly say during my nine-year, 10-year, we have received very, very good support. We really, really have. But I think the worldview has been looking at it from one year to the next year. Let's just get through this year. And I, you know, I don't think our two communities are, you know, very different than many communities, but I think if we want to do this, and we want to do this well, there has to be a multiple-year commitment. And, you know, is there a commitment to see the district, see through the district's strategic plan? Or just to really survive? You know, I, again, I think our strategic plan is something that's powerful, that's a strong vision. I can honestly say it's a model for many other districts across the Commonwealth and regionally to how to do a strategic plan correctly. And think about all the work that we've done with regard to Portrait of a Learner, and how that's really kind of going to hold. So again, the commitment has to be, the financial commitment has to be commensurate with the vision. And I think when push comes to shove, it really is about our district mission, again, about empowering all of our learners to thrive. So again, I think we need a commitment, again, in looking at not just FY '21, but over a five-year span. Like, what can we realistically do to thrive through 2025? So again, all of these presentations are going to be posted to mursbudget.org. But does anybody, other than some of those initial questions, have any questions or comments?
Just so I'm clear, in every year, you basically are using minimum local contribution equal to the current level that it's at right now.
You're referring to the towns.
To the revenue side.
77, or the 76, or 78%.
So what I did with that, quite honestly, is I took the net from any given year and added what the net increase has typically been. It's not related to the minimum contribution. It's related to historically what we've gotten over the last.
So total plus operational addition.
Yeah.
So minimum local plus operational.
Everything all total together, and typically, we get about $600,000 to $650,000 in new money from the two towns, except for last year where they did meet the MLC increase. That's about, you know, 300 Mendon, 325, 350 in Upton, approximately. I just use those numbers straight across. I didn't get more scientific than that. You know, certainly in any given year, they could do better than that. They could also do worse. A lot of it plays into how the minimums go up. If one town's minimum goes up more than the others, it impacts what's left for them to pay for, and can change it. You know, so the no-override numbers this year, I want to say if Mendon's town was $240,000, Upton's number's only about $150,000 because their minimum went up so much more. So it just offsets it.
I mean, it is fascinating how steady the growth in the Chapter 7 funding has been. I mean, it's a half, a half a percentage point every year the last five years.
Oh, you mean the real numbers?
The real numbers. I mean, it has increased for us substantially enough to pay for any significant portion of our additional costs.
Well, let's start getting printed money on the copier.
What makes you think we are? Appreciate the model. I'll work right into it, thank you.
Yeah, it's a model, and I think invariably, this is a conversation about, you know, we can get into the weeds and we can have, you know, get into a discussion about what it means for FY '22 and beyond, and so on. But I think at the heart of the matter is a conversation about the quality of the school district, the quality of the programming, and what do people want to support. I think more often than not, that the budgets that we have provided and generated usually, so many times Jay puts at the top of the funding sheet, if you haven't noticed throughout the year, MURSD revenue budget. Okay, MURSD revenue budget, which basically means we create a budget that is based upon the revenue that's available. So if I go back to this slide, that shows the actual revenue, again, increases on an average of 1.75%. And when you've got an average of 1.75%, you can't keep up with level services. So we've had this situation where, you know, the Mendon assessment, you're looking at the increase from '17 to '18, and then '18 to '19, you know, 2.5%, 3.33%. And I get the piece that last year, to get to minimum local contribution, for the town of Mendon, that 5.48% was a stretch. I get that. And for Upton, it's almost identical. A little more in FY '18, the '17 to '18 increase, 3.21% than 3.69%. And then FY '20, 5.33%. Again, roughly was the MLC increase. I get that piece that's a stretch. But again, the heart of the matter is the level of support to adequately finance level services when you have consistently a revenue-based budget. It's not going to work. It's not going to work over the long haul. And I think the formula, as those of you know, particularly, you know, being on the committee for some period of time, it's tough to ride an override, so to speak, and then have a period of three or four years where you say, okay, in order to make things work for level services, hopefully, we're all real super healthy and we can get lucky with a zero in healthcare insurance. Or hopefully, so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so retires, and we can have some savings there, or so on. I mean, that, you can do that only so much, you know? And I think we saw, even with last, putting together this current fiscal year's budget, even with really stretching ourselves with those district receipts, we still had to cut positions. And I use this analogy all the time, that sometimes I feel like the budget is a little bit of a house of cards, and it's a very large house of cards. And last year, we pulled away four cards. But guess what? The house still stayed intact. I can tell you, if we do not have success with the FY '21 budget request, we're pulling away 20 cards, maybe 30 cards, and that house is not going to stay intact.
Do we have a, so we had a number at one point of the amount of money we're spending per student in the district?
Yeah, we have that information. I don't have it at my disposal right now, but I could grab that easily.
That would be good to see projected as well, just to see what.
And, you know, that information is also available for all our neighboring districts and so on.
Yeah.
So this is a breakdown of FY 2020?
2020, yeah.
Does the FY 2020 revenue on the sheet, you have 36, 40?
Yeah, because that's only operational budget. I intentionally created this slide to show all sources, including federal grant monies in choice.
Okay. So that is a big difference there in choice, so.
So you mean from '20 to '21? Yeah, it's a spread of $600,000, right? And when we have the funding sheet fill, it's always kind of like the backside or the last set of columns because it's outside of the operational budget.
And just so I understand, the choice revenue you're speaking of is the choice coming from?
Kids who come into our district, the 162 whatever kids.
But it's not necessarily annual revenue that we're allocating on an annual basis. We've been able to build up our reserves. It's in a revolving account. So let's say you take in 600,000 or 700,000, but you only appropriated 4, you've got a couple hundred thousand dollars that you've saved. So over the years, we've been able to get ahead a little bit. So we had a fair amount of money in choice, which is why we went as high as a million. And then quite honestly, when it gets to the end of the year, if you notice on the year-to-date budget report, you'll look at the four teachers, classroom teacher salary lines, you'll see that they all show a negative balance. It's because I have, we appropriate, or we, you know, do a journal entry and move those expenses to the choice account. But if it gets to the end of the year and we end up with a couple hundred thousand dollars that we haven't spent because we've had a good year, I may not move all of that over. I may only use enough to get the budget balanced so that I can reserve it in choice so that we have it available for future years. So we've been able to build it up.
So you're essentially reallocating that as part of the 2021 budget?
Well, so we were able to do it. Using a million this current year, we were able to do that because we had built it up.
I see.
We just used it. So it's a poor model in that you're using one-time money for recurring costs, but the alternative is you start cutting more than you did already last year.
A total of 4 FTEs, yeah.
So don't use a million, go back to 600,000. You've got to cut another 400,000 out. You're cutting more things out of your level service budget to stay there.
Or, as we've put forward in the proposal, that increases your local assessment. So anytime you're reducing your district receipts and you know that your state funding is going to be flat, then the onus for. is going to be flat, then the onus for making up that difference falls to the two local communities.
And our outflow of charter tuition is the charter tuition reimbursement model?
Yes. The reimbursement line is revenue we get back from the state for charter students. The expenditure side is what we pay out. So that's probably, and the expenditure piece is probably listed.
Non-residential vocational charter tuition. Is the difference there, is it still positive?
Non-resident vocational is Norfolk Aggie or somebody goes to, we had a couple of kids that went to a place in Franklin, Tri-County charter, it was chartered, but it's all categorized in similar accounts.
And again, I think we could have a debate about some of these revenue lines as far as some of the assumptions. I think Jay used a pretty conservative model. And again, I think there should be a conversation around, okay, well, in looking at each of these expenditures, where are there other potential efficiencies and so on that obviously could enter the model as you get, if you wanted to refine this further. But I think as a fairly decent model that has a fairly decent amount of detail to it, I think it's pretty illustrative of where we are.
No, I think it's a good model. I do think it's a good model. Just asking some questions for clarification.
Yeah, the charter piece has hurt us for FY21 because we went from six kids, six students in charter schools to 12 in FY currently, and what we have this year is what we get assessed for next year.
Yep.
We had a fairly, almost a doubling of charter school enrollment. It's not a pretty picture.
No, it's not pretty.
How about the Celtics then, huh?
You know, the other side of this that we have to keep in mind is that the towns don't have the ability to come up with more money any better than we do, right? It's not like the towns can grow a tree and print money any more than we can do it. So their revenue is limited by a prop 2.5. So we're both locked into this, we're only going to get what we get without continuing to hit taxpayers for more taxes. So I'm not sure that there's a good solution for this either.
All right, any further questions? So are you going to be able to just reiterate the timeline here that we got until May, just as a conclusion to this discussion?
Sure. Well, I think it is apparent that two weeks from today, just from a timeline perspective, two weeks from today, we have the, well, actually, I should go chronologically. We have scheduled Wednesday a presentation before the Mendon FinCon, and they've invited the members of the Board of Selectmen as well. And then two weeks from today, on March 9th, is the open budget hearing at NIPMUC in which I will incorporate some of these slides into the overall budget presentation. But that is the time where you certify the budget. And then, you know, there could be some refinements to it as we go through April and then May through the House and the Senate budget process, but I do not anticipate much of anything. And then as far as the timeline, we have the Mendon Town Meeting, which is always the first Friday of May, which is Friday, May 1st, which is here at Misco Hill. And then the Upton Town Meeting is going to be Thursday, May 7th, also at 7:00 PM at the high school. And then the two-town elections are the successive Tuesdays, which are Tuesday, the 12th in Mendon, and then Tuesday, the 19th in Upton. And I'm sure, as we progress through, after two weeks from tonight, through the certification process, I'm sure additional information will come to the fore. I plan on, for each of the two meetings in April and then the second meeting in March, to make different aspects of the budget, different aspects of the district's requests and needs to kind of be the focal point of each of our school committee meetings.
Okay, very good.
Joe? You also cordially invited the Upman Finance Committee on the 11th.
I apologize. I should have added that.
11th looks so slighted.
I apologize, and you're my loyal person, Paul.
And we have also cordially invited the Board of Selectmen to attend that as well.
Yeah, that's going to be March 11th, so two weeks from Wednesday at Town Hall, correct?
Correct. Hopefully downstairs in the lower room.
It is.
Okay, on to the next.
Sean, could I ask one question?
Sure.
Earlier on, you said, I think you're saying you're looking for a long-term commitment from the towns. And you agree, we agree that Upton and Mendon, one way or the other, would have made that commitment in the past. Now, if we have to go through that dreaded override word, the town, men, Upton, and passed overrides, that amount of money has always stayed. I mean, if we put in $250,000 more this year, well, that $250,000 from the levy limit stays in that line for the year going forward. Now, somehow, I got the impression that, were you saying, could we raise more money this one year than you really need and then earmark it somewhere to use it for years going forward? Did I mishear you?
It's my understanding, Paul, under state law, that after the override year, that amount basically goes into the general fund for the community. And it isn't necessarily specifically earmarked for the override area consistently from year to year.
Well, with all due respect, I can say with certainty that since I've been doing this, any monies that came, were derived from an override, stayed in, I guess they were all for education. All those monies always stayed in the school budget line. It wasn't taken out for anything else. There is the one exception when we have.
The stabilization money.
And the problem we find ourselves in with that is very simply, we have, that money has stayed in the levy limit. That $450,000, let's say, that has stayed in the levy limit. So if it's five years, you know, we collected 2.5 million dollars on that. But still, it had, the school money always got what they got. The problem that presents is that if we were to take that money now and apply it to the 2021 budget, we have automatically created a deficit.
Yeah, you're.
Going into next year. So in effect, what we're doing there is we're using a one-time receipt to cover an ongoing expense.
Correct.
So that's the, and if it's, let's say, use that number, the 425, well, now we've got to come up, and because that's what we've collected, instead of going to you, it's coming from the operational budget. So now we're in a, now we've got ourselves in a mess in that regard too. So it's not an easy thing. When you look back on it, and my good friend over here may agree with me, but the best thing we should have done then was do an underwriting for that amount of money, which nobody really had the appetite to do.
Well, we were a little, it was difficult, even though we had the money in the levy because Mendon couldn't, to your point, because it was always a revenue budget, and Mendon couldn't quote match it.
It's just there.
It's just there.
Right. Well, it's not just there.
Well.
Because it gets reallocated in other ways. So instead of having an override for X, Y, and Z area that we need additional funding in, in the following year, it gets redistributed for those other funding needs that are there. To your point, I agree. Override money that has been balanced out in regards to the school has always followed the school. So if it's ever been transferred into the school fees, it's always followed the school because you've never seen the assessment go down. If it wasn't following the school, you'd see that assessment go down.
Correct.
But to your point, what you said, there's other budgets that have been, that over time have gotten there, and then those things have been, over time, just reallocated in order to balance out the impact to the town as well. So if you take that 400 and whatever that went into the stabilization, back in that time, to your point, the five years, I agree with you. If you try to reallocate that, you've created basically a structural deficit moving forward that you're going to have to address anyways.
So basically, to Phil, your point, Paul, is instead of doing an override for the school, we're going to be doing an override for the operational.
Correct. But you haven't added that.
If you applied that 420, and I hate to put a number out there because there's a microphone here that's going to say, you know, that number is going to get changed for time. But if you took that X dollars, if you took that X dollars and applied it, well, now, instead of, next year, instead of having X dollars for the school district, you're doing X dollars for the operational side of the Upman budget. So it's, you know, it's catch 22, no matter what you do here.
Yep, agree.
And for all the benefit that we did gain over the five years or so, that amount of money stayed in the levy, well, now it's, going forward, it's, you're in a conundrum here. What do you do?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're just, I think the point that you talk about, you're, we're at an inflection point, not only for the school, we're at an inflection point for the towns. This isn't just a school question, I guess is the point I'm raising. This is a broad perspective, you know, on where we're going from a town perspective collectively.
And the towns, Upton, and Mendon, they both have capital projects.
Oh, yeah.
That they're looking at and.
You got needs in recycling, you got needs in other areas of the operational budget, you've got all those things that are out there, so.
Our recycling thing's gone up like 35,000 or something like that, 35, 40.
35, 40%.
I would think that if either town did a similar model to what we just did for the school district and just looked out five years and added things where you thought you needed to add, because I'm sure there's things you're not doing that you probably should be doing as a town, you would find the same gap between what your projected revenue is and your expenditures. I don't think this is a unique model in that regard for either town.
I don't think it is at all.
Like I said, I think that it's difficult for the town, any town government these days, to live at a 2.5% increase in revenue on an annual basis. It may have worked in 1980, but it's not 1980 anymore. Just like the school district, we keep saying it's not school when, you know, when I was in school. It's a different world now. I think Paul said it pretty clearly when he looked at the elementary schools. It's not the schools he went to.
Where I went, the school I went to.
You know, but that's the law. That's the state law. There's nothing we really can do about that at this point, but I think that's what hits all of us.
Well, thanks again for putting the five-year model together because I think that it starts the conversation between not only us and the school and the towns, but the towns together and within themselves. So that's very much appreciated. Thank you. All right, so moving on to the next agenda item. We have new business, approval of the Mersey San Teresa exchange.
Yeah, you have in your packet a request from Julie DeSohn for, again, the second time of the exchange with our partner school in San Sebastian, Spain. This time, it's going to be a little bit different in the sense that the students from San Teresa are going to come here in September like they did the last time. However, we are going to travel over there in February, inclusive of one week, one of the weeks being the February vacation week. So that's the feedback that we got. I know there were some conflicts and concerns with regard to fall athletics, plus it's just being a little bit overwhelming with, you know, almost four straight weeks of hosting and then traveling. But needless to say, I think all of you know how I feel about this exchange and my support for this, and I strongly urge you approve it.
Can I get a motion to approve this trip, please? Or this exchange, I should say.
I make a motion to approve the San Teresa and NIPMUC exchange program for 2020, 2021 school year.
Set that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It passes.
That's the question?
Yes. The votes for our groups.
It wouldn't take too long. Just given that the travel from here to there is going to occur in February, are there, what would be the contingency plans for if there's weather and they can't get out? Do they extend? Does it just shorten the trip?
So one of my presets in my weather app is San Sebastian. Actually, San Sebastian has what is considered to be a subtropical climate. As a matter of fact, the high temperature today was 64 degrees.
It's like here.
But here, like say they go, this is here and they can't leave.
Oh.
Or there's a coronavirus in Spain.
Next school committee meeting, we're going to have to talk a little bit about China. But anyway, that will work out. We have a travel agent that we work with, and I'm sure we'll have a contingency plan for that. But good question.
All right, so that's approved. So any old business? None, I assume?
None.
Correspondence?
None.
Correspondence? Okay. Other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? None? Okay. Future agenda items, the open budget hearings on March 9th, as Joe already mentioned, and we also have the technology investments discussion on March 23rd for our meeting. With that, we can adjourn on a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned.